I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 20th, 2015 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
Yes, we do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the city council chambers. We've got one presentation. We've got the Mayor's Youth Council. Both Krista and Haley are here. You guys want to come up and share with us?
... envision our faces, but in Texas. We were able to go with Leadership Council to Texas in Austin for the National League of Cities Conference. It was absolutely amazing. I'm Vice President, Krista. This is-
I'm Haley. I'm the Secretary.
...
We get to see it. You get to see it later.
Yeah, that's not important.
So first, we went to Texas. We went, I think, the day after the mayor got there. But we went there with Officer Tackett, who's our lead instructor. We got out of school for a day, but, you know, it was a lot of fun. And the whole time there, we were just having- we got on a plane ride. It was Krista's first one, and she was really excited. And we were all just taking pictures and having a really good time. When we got to our hotel, we just kind of dropped our stuff off and went to the conference right away. And we first, we went and ate with the mayor, and then we went to some of our leadership stuff.
When we first got there, we went to the vendor fair. There was a lot of people that wanted nothing to do with us, so we kept walking. A few of them would stop and talk, like, "Hey, why are you here?" And we would let them know that there is a youth section to this, and they would try and talk to us, but-
It was mostly for the people who had money.
It was.
And we didn't have money.
So we started off, day one, with an awesome youth social to get us involved with everyone and make sure that we could actually talk to each other when we got to the breakfast and everything that would actually be serious business. We had a great time with that.
We got to see Mockingjay before anyone else.
It was really cool.
And then we were roller skating, and we met some girls from Missouri, right around where all that stuff was going on. And we just-
Like an hour and a half out of Ferguson.
We got pins from them and a bunch of other places, and they were all really nice. And we just, we met a lot of people, and we talked to them about what they've been doing in their councils and stuff that we can do in ours.
On the second day, we started with going to the After School Success Workshop. We didn't learn a whole bunch there, but we did realize that we have a couple of places here and there that different places, different schools have specifically for them, but we don't have the conjoined- this is what we want to do with all of the schools, whether elementary or high school.
It's more like, this is the Monarch stuff. They have all the programs. This is Titan stuff. They have all the programs. But there's not one place that we can all, like, come together, like, the youth council. We're all mixed. And it's like, yeah, the Monarchs and Titans, you know? We're not horrible people.
We can coexist, I promise.
And it's so, that's one thing that we were talking about, is there's not really places where we can just conjoin together. We're always apart, and so it's the school rivalry.
But we did enjoy the fact that we could praise ourselves with being a city that doesn't have the, like, I don't know what you would call it. What do they, were they, like, they weren't impoverished, but they were just-
They didn't have stuff for the kids to do after school.
At all, anywhere?
And it was like, all of them had, like, really bad grades. And they were like, "If your kids have bad grades, you can do this." And we're like, "Well, our kids kind of have pretty good grades."
So it was, it was a mix of the two. Then we went to the Youth Delegates Forum. That was really cool because I kind of thought we were the only one that had a youth leadership council for our mayor. I'm wrong. I was really wrong. There is some all over the country, and we got to meet most of those people, or at least their finest. So hearing what they do with their youth council was really inspiring to see what we can do with ours, and it kind of made us feel like we were, we have stuff, we can boost it up a little bit.
I was talking with one of the kids from California, and I was telling him all the stuff that we do during, like, the Fourth of July with all the parades and the, like, the-
Papio Days.
Papio Days and all that.
Papio Idol.
And he was just like, "You guys do so much." I'm like, "Really? It's like, one thing a month?"
We really do.
And he goes, "Yeah, but we do, like, one thing a year." And I was like, "Oh, okay." And so it was nice to hear that, you know, we're doing stuff right. And it's not like, you know, we may seem like we're not doing a lot, but we really do a lot.
And then that afternoon, we went on a duck tour. It's way cooler to see the pictures. But it's basically a tour on a bus that then goes in a lake. So while we had the serious stuff in the morning and learning and stuff and all that business, we got to see all of Austin and the history that goes into that, and that was really just-
They like to brag about the flags being at the same height.
They like to brag a lot.
Just about everything.
Uh, do you want to talk about-
Okay, sure. Okay, so we were only there for a couple of days. So the morning before we left, we went to a breakfast. I met a bunch of mayors from different places, and we weren't allowed to sit with people we knew, so we, like, all had to split up. And everyone was like, "All right, so people." I talked with a girl from, or one of the leaders from Florida, and she's been trying to get a youth council started. And so she asked for my email and everything, and she's been emailing me and asking me how she can get it started and what we do, how we, like, elect people and how we get people involved, really, like, how we got our name out there. So I helped get one of those started. That was really nice, you know, to say that I was part of that.
I talked personally with a lot of just elected officials, not exactly mayors, but a lot of, like, people like you. And they were pretty open. It was really cool because we got to see them wanting more information from us instead of the typical, "I need you to tell me things," with the student to adult, instead the adults. Like, they were really proud that we were there and really curious about how to do different things, and so-
They wanted to hear a lot about, like, our generation. They were like, "What can we do to get you guys involved?"
And we're there, so we already are involved. But whatever, it works out. Okay, and then this was just for Tackett. We went to Famous, Gus's Famous Fried Chicken. He was very impressed with the fried pickles.
So he took a bunch of pictures, and it's how we had to show them to you, but you can't see them.
Yeah, but you can't see them, so imagine fried pickles.
And they had the Nebraska game playing in Texas, and we were very impressed with it.
It was amazing. We were, we twinned on the first day. We both had the same Husker shirt. We became known as the Husker Twins. It was great.
Yeah, that's what all the kids there knew us as.
So now what? Do you want to talk about your papio-
Um, okay.
That one with the-
Wait, what was your idea?
Was that mine?
I gotta read this. I haven't looked at it in a month. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, so one of the ideas we had from the other people was going to, is making something known.
I remember.
And our biggest focus, our biggest focus being with the DUI checkpoint that we got to help out with was the drunk driving, distracted driving. So now, do you know what I'm talking about now?
Yes, I know what I'm talking about now. Okay, so they were talking, a lot of the places were like, "We have problems with, like, getting teens to understand, like, the problems with texting and driving and older people, like, drinking and driving." And so we were talking about, we weren't really sure if we were allowed to do it because there's, like, could be safety stuff, but-
The community.
Yeah, in junior high, they let you wear, like, the goggles so you know what you look. It's like, they try and make you walk in a straight line, and they're the drunk goggles. And we were like, "What if we had people, like, put those on at, like, a low setting?" And then had them ride around, like, the Papio Fun Park track to see what it's like. You know, you're just riding this little fake car around, and you can barely do it if you were in an actual car. All this stuff that could be going on.
And we could even have one person not have those on, and then someone else texting, and then someone with the drunk goggles, and have the different aspect of, "Holy cow, this is the actual road."
This is a game, and I'm messing it up if I was on a real road. Just because we have, like, the car rollover thing, and, you know, kids are like, "I'm out of school." But if it was like, I'd actually, like, I could hurt people if I did this, you know? It's not just watching. You're, they're actually participating.
And then another idea we had, because a lot of the others' mayor's councils do a lot with their school district, and we kind of just-
We do community stuff, but we don't-
Take people out of it, and, I don't know, we don't really do much. If we did, like, a full school district, levels of all kind, week of anti-bullying or something, I haven't actually figured out this idea fully in my head, but if we did something where the youth council presents it to them, and then we email them, like, "Hey, read this. Watch this video. Do this activity with the different grades." It could just, kind of can join us all as a city.
A lot of schools were doing the, like, No Place for Hate stuff, and then showing, like, this, like, they just did a movie about, like, crimes or whatever, being, like, hateful to others. And we were like, "Well, that doesn't really work for our school because we're already in No Place for Hate." But if we found something else that the school's like, "Oh, yeah, we have that problem," then we would, that's what we were thinking about because we can't do No Place for Hate.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about any other as well?
No.
Okay. Also, if any of you guys have a Twitter or an Instagram, I want you to get out your phone right now.
We were told to do this by the leader at the thing.
Yeah, they actually literally said-
They've said that one thing we should do is get the council involved with the younger generation. So our youth council made Twitters and Instagrams, and we're the leaders, and we watch them and monitor them.
No one's going to comment anything bad, and if they do, it's going away.
Yeah, that's what we were told. And so we would like you guys to follow them so you can see what our youth council is doing on a regular basis. And so it's on the thing, but-
It's right here, yeah, because it was supposed to be visual. It's @PMYLK, or PMILK, as we call it, for Papillion Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. But that's really long, so. And then the Instagram is PMYLK1.
Because without the "1," it was already taken. But you guys will get this PowerPoint, and it's just the last slide, so if you, when you see it, you guys should-
We'll go ahead and share that. I do appreciate you guys coming along. It was very interesting that when they were at the meeting, it put it into context. Ferguson was just happening. And so there were elected officials and youth from the St. Louis area and some of that area. So there were some very, very serious conversations occurring in the rooms, both with the adults and the youth, trying to, you know, all the national conversation that's occurring with policing in Ferguson, but putting that in real-time context with youth and elected officials and having that same conversation. It was a very interesting time to be there. And then to hear you guys talking about actually solving problems. How does the community come together? Really intrigued about some of what's going to come out of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a tough report to follow. Did an excellent job. And just to footnote, council, I think both these young ladies are Monarchs. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I always wondered about the Monarch participation on the side, so getting some cred there up at your school there, young lady, so appreciate it. Good, good job. I'm liking you more and more. If you haven't noticed, Mayor and council members, we're actually down to our third-string city clerk tonight. But rest easy. Remember, Ohio State won the national championship with their third-string quarterback, so we expect the same. You're getting illness and then out of the office, but thank you, Kathy, for stepping in on a very, very short notice to help us out this evening. More serious note, we know that we are well into the legislative session. I think tomorrow maybe is the last day that bills can be introduced. Of specific note and interest to the city of Papillion, say, really priority one for us is, there are multiple bills, I think five, that have been introduced trying to address the learning community in one manner or another. None of those bills appear to assist us with our primary concern, and that has been the frozen boundaries. We continue to stake our position as a city that that is the number-one impediment to the growth of this city, are the frozen boundaries to the southern edge. We are having dialogue with senators and with the other respective school districts, our own in Springfield and Bellevue, to try and reach some consensus. Certainly, their issue primarily is the common levy. Ours is boundaries. We hope that there's some type of resolution out of one of those bills along the way that will address our, really, complete inability to grow to the South and has been for the last four or five years, and that's only going to continue to get worse. There's also a couple of bills that address city finances, issues with how you can refinance bonds and such. And then we do continue our efforts to receive timely notification when the state gives away our one-and-a-half-cent sales tax as a business incentive. It, we, it's better than it used to be, but our information's still very, very limited, and there's some exposure out there. And so those are really three bills that we're paying a lot of attention to. I briefed you before, we'll be conducting police chief interviews the remainder of this week. We're still on a timeline to get a name, the mayor to submit a name to you as a council in February. I'm certain we'll meet that. You'll also notice on a project here in the next couple of days that there's going to be a trail expansion, and that trail expansion's a partnership between the city of Papillion-Lavista and the NRD. Work will begin within the next few days, and effectively, if you can visualize with me, if you go down our trail from the plaza and it curves back to the south towards the recreation facility, that trail will come, technically, it's like 90th Street all the way up to 108th Street. So that'll be a 10-foot trail that's going to create a lot of connectivity, and we expect that will be completed in 2015. The interesting thing there, that's been a project that we've worked with Lavista and NRD on. We've also got an extension that we're in year six or seven on 72nd Street, effectively from the Y down to 370. That's a federal project that's still going through all of its reviews. This has been no federal money project that we're able to get done in a little over a year just by working together, so. The final thing, Nicole did send you, council members, all, an email this afternoon. There's three upcoming events that councils participated in to varying degrees over the years coming up soon. The Senior Valentine's Day Luncheon, Lori has that date and looking for volunteers. The League Conference is in February, and then the Sarpy County Chamber Grand Giveaway is coming up on March 5th. So if you're interested in any of those three, contact Nicole, and she can facilitate your attendance at those events. concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Make a note, one of those items that was passed was a reappointment to the Tree Board. Jeff Perkins is here. Jeff, thank you for that. You've now, is this your third term? Something like that? Been on a while. And Tony Gowen gave an update at the last council meeting about some of the activities of the Tree Board, so it is very important. It makes a big impact on the city. So Jeff, thank you for volunteering your service. Appreciate that. Next is item, Ordinance 1709. An ordinance to amend Chapter 9, Article 1 and Article 2 of the Papillion Municipal Code to provide for the establishment of Nebraska revised statutes, Chapter 16 Library, Library Board of Advisors, Library Director Meetings, Organizations, Keeping of Records, Duties of Library Advisors, to amend Chapter 130 of the Papillion Municipal Code to be consistent with the adoption of a Chapter 16 Library, to repeal Chapter 9, Article 9-3, 9-4, 9-5, and Chapter 130, 130-1 through 130-6 in their entirety as previously enacted, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that we'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. Just for the public, I know there's some here that are very interested in this topic, and then some that are probably watching the meeting as well. The next council meeting, which is February 3rd, is there will be a public hearing. We'll take any testimony, and we'll allow for all of that. And then the following meeting, which would be February 17th, is when there will be council discussion, any proposed amendments, and then a vote on that. So February 3rd and February 17th will be the rest of that process. Next is Ordinance 1699. An ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as part of Tax Lot 1B, a tax lot located in part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, also part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 29, and together with part of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 28, all located in Township 14 North, Range 12 East, generally located on the northwest corner of Highway 370 and 108 Street, from agricultural AG to mixed use, to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents?
... here on behalf of Jerry Torzahn, the developer, also kind of in lieu of Jason Thielen and John Bachman. And as you can see, they all abandoned me tonight. I don't know what for, but they did. So you should be familiar with this project, most of you that have been on council for a while. This project originally came to you in 2004 as a preliminary plat for the Kingsbury Hills commercial area. It is technically not part of the Kingsbury Hills Sanitary Improvement District. Mr. Torzahn purchased it and is proposing it to develop it in a very, very similar manner to what was proposed in 2004. That preliminary plat has expired, which required us to start the process over again. What you see with the connection between 108th Street or Whitmus Drive and 114th Street is virtually the exact configuration as before. There's been some modifications in some of the parking and building layout, some of the orientation of the building. There's been some enhancements to try and encourage pedestrian connections in between Kingsbury and over to the coming Granite Falls project. And the primary issue that was, came out of this project is this particular intersection with Whitmus Drive. On the previous plat, it was considerably closer to Highway 370, and in review by the Nebraska Department of Roads, they wanted to maintain as much of a separation from Highway 370 for stacking movements, et cetera. That turned into a fairly extensive process, but in the end, we were able to demonstrate that everything functioned at this distance between Highway 370 and this intersection for commercial purposes, and NDR signed off on that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. That's sort of a quick overview, but it's virtually the same project as was approved in 2004.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Next is item F1, Resolution R150007. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat from AG Agricultural to Mixed Use MU for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 1 in the southeast quarter of Section 29, and also that part, including Highway 370 right-of-way, all located in Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 108th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is BHI Development LLC, and this is Granite Falls Commercial. I'll open the public hearing.
Mark Westergaard again. Just one additional comment. The mixed-use agreement and the final mixed-use plan and everything that goes along with that will be done at the final plat stage. So what's before you tonight is the preliminary plat, so no further comments.
Thank you again. Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R150007?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Next is F2, Resolution R15008, also a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit for the property legally described as Lot 1, South Papillion, replat 1, being a replat of lots 1 through 12 Block 7 and lots 1 through 12 Block 8, all in South Papillion, in addition to the city of Papillion, together with Tax Lots 16A2, 16A1A, and 16A1B in Section 26, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6th PM, all in Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 423 South Washington. Applicant is the Papillion-Lavista School District. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have proponents? I know the school district's here. Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R15008?
motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Also, the school district. Item F3, Resolution R15009, public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as Lot 1, South Papillion, replat 1, being a replat of lots 1 through 12 Block 7 and lots 1 through 12 Block 8, all in South Papillion, in addition to the city of Papillion, together with Tax Lot 16A2, 16A1A, and 16A1B in Section 26, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6th PM, all in Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 423 South Washington. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? And again, the school district applicant is here. Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R15009?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Council discussion? Ms. Klug?
Just a question as we're replating this and that, and I know they're planning on doing some building. Have we done some real discussions with the business owners in that same location as they plan on moving things at the junior high to make sure that they fully are aware of what's going on and are understanding how this can maybe even help them?
Mr. Strzema?
From the city's standpoint, this is a public hearing. We did send out notices to all the property owners within 300 feet. We haven't had any, at least I have not had any contact from adjacent property owners. I'm not aware of what other efforts the school district may have taken to notify.
And if you could state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is John Brennan. I'm the director of Buildings and Grounds. We have not had discussions with any of the property owners over there. We think in general that the design for the addition is going to help out the traffic along the street that fronts the school there, but we've not had any conversation with any of the property owners there, Dairy Queen or the other ones that are very close. Is there anything else?
No, that's fine. I just, I, you know, I would hope that we would do that the next time we're doing things, simply because it is going to help the traffic there, and I'm pretty sure they're going to see this as a positive. But I think for relations, I would encourage it.
We can bring that up with Annette Iman, who is our PR director, and certainly when we add the property and the, not the property, but the parking lot there on the east side, it really is going to reduce the traffic, and then the left turn off of 84th or Washington Street into the property. Thank you.
And if you, he might let Annette know, the downtown businesses do have a formal business association with a board, so going through that's a great way to reach all of the businesses down there. Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F4, Resolution R150015. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 108th Street and Schram Road. The applicant is Southbrook Development LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R150015?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Did you want to change your vote?
Yes, I hit that by accident.
We'll change it when she reads it.
Okay.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Next is item F5.
I tried beating him.
Ordinance 1690. An ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as part of the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 108th Street and Schram Road, from agricultural AG to single-family residential medium-density, R2, to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1690?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Klug. Any, we do have a motion to, do we have a motion to amend Ordinance 1690? Need to change the name of the development from Southbrook to two words, to Southbrook one word. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have proponents or opponents on the motion to amend? Any council discussion on that item? Do you vote on the motion to amend?
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is F6, Resolution R150016. A resolution to approve a subdivision agreement for the Southbrook Development. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, I guess I'm just asking if you could maybe talk a little bit about the city's financial commitment into this particular project?
Yes. I'm looking at about three different people that could answer that question. Who would be best? Mr. Strzema?
I guess I won the lottery. So-
I guess I won the lottery. Um, so, this Southbrook Development's located at the, it'd be the west side of Hundred and Eighth Street and just north of Shram. And it's, so it's adjacent to city property, which is the, the Walnut Creek area. And so, as such, um, when our two roads get constructed, the responsibility lies on the adjacent property owners, um, and then the county pays for a portion as well. Um, because the city is an adjacent property owner, um, the obligation to participate in the road improvement, um, does fall on us. So, at this point, uh, as part of the development, um, Hundred and Eighth Street will be paved, um, from Hundred and Eighth Street, or, excuse me, from Shram Road north to where it's paved today, and then it'll be paved from that same intersection on Shram East, uh, to where the paving, um, begins on Shram, just, just south of the park entrance. Um, the city's portion of that project, um, is four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and that's about, is that one-third?
Uh, one-third of our budget.
Of the, of the total project cost.
Did I answer the question?
Yes, it did.
And again, the unusual part is 'cause we are actually a landowner right there, and we about that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Glover?
Uh, just to clarify, you, you know, um, number eight, we're gonna, uh, approve from Papillion-Lavista South to the, to the corner of Shram Road. Would, are the landowners, when we go back the other direction from Shram Road back to the pavement, which would be to the east, are the landowners involved in that piece too? Or does this not include that, that piece at this time?
So, the SID has a responsibility to contribute to the road improvements along its frontage. Um, in this case, we didn't wanna leave a gap on Shram Road. We have some experience with that, and know it doesn't work out very well. And so, we're, we're taking the contribution that the SID is responsible for, um, but we're applying some of that to the improvements on Shram Road east of Hundred and Eighth Street. Even though that's not on their frontage, we know for this, you know, to provide safe access to the development, that that improvement needs to happen. Um, the trade-off is then, on Shram Road west of Hundred and Eighth Street, um, we're not doing a full build out of that road. It's being paved, um, but we're deferring the, um, some of the amenities, like the decorative fencing and the trail and some of the landscaping, um, to a time when adjacent development happens to the south. Then that road'll be, um, fully improved to a three-lane cross-section, and all the amenities will be put in. So we're taking, um, the funds that would've gone to the amenities and putting those towards Shram Road east of Hundred and Eighth Street.
So, are the property owners that live east on Shram Road that's going to be paved, are they a part of this, or are we doing, the county and the city doing it?
Um, those property owners, when they develop, then they will contribute at that time, and it'll be reimbursed. It'll be, it's reimbursable.
So at this point, they're not involved in it?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F7, Resolution R Fifteen Zero Zero One Seven. A resolution to approve a water and sewer connection agreement for Southbrook Development. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R Fifteen Zero Zero One Seven?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clug. Any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F8, Resolution R Fifteen Zero Zero One Eight. A resolution to approve an inter-local agreement with SID Three Oh One, Southbrook, for that portion of One Hundred and Eighth Street to be improved from Papillion-Lavista South High School to Shram Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R Fifteen Zero Zero One Eight?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. I don't believe any committees have met. Um, do we have any comments from the floor? No comments from the floor. Any council comments? Just a couple of updates from the last couple of weeks. Um, did attend a Greater Omaha Economic Development Meeting. That's the regional partnership we're part of that covers two states and, what, seven counties, I think? No, five counties. Um, got an update on some of the regional activities for site selection and recruiting businesses and headquarters into the region. Uh, Mr. Hoynes and Chief Boz and I met with Jack Miller from the Rural Fire District and Russ Zeeb from PVFD Inc. to talk about the current contracts we've got in communication and some projects that might be going on. Um, also, I went and spoke to the Omaha Board of Realtors Government Affairs Committee, gave them an update on a lot of things that are going on down here. Uh, Mr. Hoynes and Mr. Gowen and I met with Ann Ames and Mike Matthews of the Papillion Community Foundation, um, to get an update and talk some more about the Veterans, uh, Park Project, and the foundation has been receiving donations towards that project. So it's, uh, some nice momentum that's going. Um, also attended the Build Omaha Annual Meeting. That's one of the builders' organizations. A lot of builders belong to that, um, and a lot of them that do work in Papillion. And then, um, several of us also attended the monthly meeting of the Historical Downtown Papillion Business Association. That is an energized group, and they've got a lot of plans for the summer. Uh, those businesses are, are really carrying a lot of the momentum we've, we now have going. And then also attended the Midlands Community Foundation Reflection Ball, Carla. That was a wonderful event for a good cause with veterans. Um, and it's probably most of the major updates. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mungard. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned. Thank you.